I'd like to call a regular board meeting, Board of Education, Goshen Central School District, tonight, Monday, June 26th, 6:30 PM. Tonight's meeting is being held in the District Administration Building and live streamed through YouTube. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Collegians and a moment of meditation. Please be careful, Mary Kay DeBrice, on the school bus monitor. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor. Next on the agenda is the President's Report. I usually don't make this about myself, but I'm going to take five minutes. Because it is my last meeting and I just want to thank several people within the district. So if you bear with me, I've made some notes. I want to thank the entire staff of our district, everyone in central office who is behind the scenes. We have our clerks, our administrative assistants, treasurer, people in the personnel office, buildings and grounds, the custodial staff, transportation department with our bus drivers, our dispatchers and mechanics, food service workers, teacher aides, teachers, greeters, it's a long list, guys, social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, assistant principals, principals, all of our administrators, all of our staff from pupil personnel, technology, nurses, the security people, the village police, those that run and support extracurriculars, the clubs, the coaches, any of our advisors, or drama, music, athletics, science, lipid, mock trial. If I forgot anybody, I really do apologize, but everybody that I've come across in the nine years has just always gone above and beyond. Truly, I haven't met anybody that hasn't had the best interest of all of you students. So, thank you for that. I want to thank Brett Leyden for stepping up for Vice President this year, because that was kind of a little bit of a strange situation. It was great that he stepped up, I appreciate that. Mr. Carter, thank you, early for the whole entire nine years. You've been, I believe, in this position. And if not, you were principal of a couple of my kids at that time, so thank you. Ms. Maureen Van Putten-Lamaran. Took me how long to get that right? But thank you for, you know, all of your timely budget reports, everything. You've answered questions along the way. I know that I've had some, so I appreciate your support. I will miss you. Let's see, student representative, Michael. On behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you, and you can thank Maureen as well, just a little token. You've been a really welcome addition, so thank you. It's been nice seeing your face. I would be remiss if I didn't add you, Jonathan. Just making sure, you know, that we go live when we need to. I really appreciate it. I have to again, only because he keeps my mornings animated with his directions, is Mr. Tom Gilbert, every morning at the high school. I think it's really animated like a flight attendant and it's awesome and it makes my daughter smile. So, thank you, Tom. And to the entire board that I have worked with in the past, thank you for your service. And to the current board, I wish you the best in your upcoming service and thank you as well for all your volunteering. It's a lot of hours put in. I did also put together, which I will send to the board, I just didn't have time today, just two letters specifically regarding Dr. Coats and Maureen Farrell. And if I will, if you bear with me just for a minute, I'd like to read those letters. It's important to me that you just know that my feelings on these two people who have really dedicated so much time to our district. Dear Dr. Coats, I wanted to personally thank you for your professionalism and collaboration with the Board of Education. Your tenure began in 2021 with COVID pandemic protocols that were constantly changing. This wasn't an easy time and you were able to successfully learn your new role and lead the district through it with tenacity, decisiveness, and grace. During this time, you also established a positive transparent relationship with the community, parents, administrators, teachers, staff, students, and board members. You continue to approach every issue, whether long-term goals or daily questions, with the same level of importance and thoughtfulness. You ensure that every decision ultimately benefits the students of the district. Thank you once again for your leadership and it's been a pleasure. And last but not least, Maureen, I saved you for the last. And it's funny too, because today I even texted her in like, in two seconds, right away. You know, she just answers me, because I just wanted to verify my memory. When I first started on the board, Maureen was not here. We had another clerk, Cindy, and Cindy was awesome too, and I was really sorry to see Cindy leave. And I didn't know Maureen that well, but wow, but immediately she just stepped up and she was able to really assist all board members. Because as some of you know, when you first walk in on the board, you just really don't know. So, Maureen's always there to help. So, also to dear Maureen, or dear Mrs. Farrell, I wanted to personally thank you for your service with the Goshen School District. I have worked with you for eight of the nine years that I've served in the Board of Education. During this time, you have displayed professionalism and pride in your work. You really are a wealth of knowledge. You always seem to know or have information and the documentation needed before anyone asks. And I'll just elaborate a little bit, how many agenda meetings? I'm like, okay, Curtis, I got this on my list, I got this. And he's like, oh, more, and she's walking in with it without even asking. She's like, oh yeah, I already thought of that, and she has it in her packet, so it's just, it's amazing. Your strong work ethic is matched only by how conscientious you are. There are a few people that I have come across in my professional career who show as much heart with every task that they are faced with. This was especially true during COVID. The COVID pandemic, when it did not go unnoticed how tirelessly you worked to make certain that every protocol, procedure, and new policy was in place, ensuring the ongoing safety and education of all of our staff and students. You have successfully onboarded a new superintendent, as well as many administrators and board members, all with a friendly and welcoming attitude. You have always willingly and diligently taken on new responsibilities and unexpected additional work, especially during COVID, during our time working together. All of your efforts had made my role as a board member easier, as I'm sure it has with all of our board members. Thank you again for your service and assistance. I definitely will miss you. Sorry, choked up. That's my five minutes. So, thank you to everyone in the community for your support and faith that you've had for me during these last nine years. It truly was an honor and a privilege and one that I didn't take for granted. And I truly do hope that I made a difference in the lives of the students at Goshen, so thank you. And then next, I just wanted to congratulate, and I should have started with that, the class of 2023. The ceremony was amazing, albeit inside, made the best of it. And I do hear feedback that it was a great ceremony, as well as our CJ Hooker graduates. The moving up ceremony also was amazing, and we got lucky, we had that outside and that was awesome. And I'll let Dr. Coats, maybe Mr. Carter, talk more about all the other festivities that we had, but we had moving up ceremonies at GIS, some of the festivities at SAS. So, it was a really nice way to end the year with all of our celebrations. And I also wanted to point out too, even though it wasn't a Goshen-led event, TEDx, and the reason why I bring it up is because, as usual, I don't know if anybody got a chance to go, it was amazing and I just really need to compliment our actual students that were part of it. So, we had Grant Moore, he is now going to be a senior. We had, am I saying it right, is it Judah Gordon, also going to be a senior? We had Zoe Cairo, am I saying that correct? Okay, and she's just graduated. Aisha, I know I'm going to say something wrong, you want to say it?
Aisha, relax.
Thank you, also graduating. And a lot of people that played a key role in this event. But like I've said before, it just always amazes me that these young adults can get up on stage and not only get up on stage, but effectively portray something in a lot of times that's a very emotional, near and dear subject that they are discussing. So, it was just a really enjoyable night for $10, right? And Jonathan played a key role in that too, so thank you, Mr. Reddick. Oh, and you do too, yes, I'm so sorry.
Give him a shout out to the students.
Yes. You know, and I conlated it too, Jim, but then I started going down the list and I'm like, there's just so many people, but anyway, so thank you, and that concludes my report. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Curtis Coats. Oh, sorry, sorry. Sorry, next on the agenda is the Student Representatives Report, Mr. Michael Lombardi. Sorry, Michael.
So, with those events, I would say, for the end of the year happening at Goshen High School, we had the TEDx talks, which took place on June 8th at the high school, with over 220 attendees to listen to the motivational speakers. We had Anna Loder and Serena Yadu visited the Capitol in Albany, Senator Scoofus in recognition of their accomplishments. The NYSPHSAA recognized scholar athlete teams with our own represented by the following teams of Boys and Girls Golf, Boys and Girls Outdoor Track and Fields, Girls Flag Football, Girls Lacrosse, Girls Softball, and Unified Basketball. The seniors had prom, senior day, and graduation, so best of luck to them, the graduating class. And then I would like to thank everyone for my time served as representative. I really valued my experience and I hope everyone has a great summer.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, that's the second time I've done that too. Next on the agenda, we have the Legislative Update, Mr. Tom Loftus.
Thank you. We closed out our year with the year-end OSB meeting, really just a year-end review. We had an opportunity to just hear from three different students across different districts presenting their civic readiness awards. So, it was a really nice evening to culminate the year and move forward to the schedule forthcoming for the new meetings.
Thank you, Tom. Next on the agenda now is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you, Mrs. Salti, and I know Mrs. Salti's angry with me in a moment, but I'm going to embarrass her one more time. If you attended the graduation ceremony, you know we gave a recognition there. But the one thing that people often forget is positions of Board of Education members are volunteer positions. And to give nine years of time, not only to come to board meetings, but to come to events, to support our staff, to support everyone that comes here on a regular basis, trying to put the right foot always forward on behalf of the students, it does not go without us. Your last one as Board of Education President is certainly most notable for the things that you've been able to steer us towards and to help us through over the last couple of years. So, we have several things we would like to give to you tonight. Number one, it's just a small gift on behalf of the district, on behalf of your board members, on behalf of all of your administration. And then second, I'd like to read a plaque, Mrs. Allison Salti presented in recognition and appreciation for your nine years of committed service and leadership from 2014 to 2023 as a board member, 2021 and '22 as Vice President, '22, '23 as President, serving as committee member on the Orange County School Boards Association, on our Board Audit Committee, on our Policy Committee. Please know that you have truly made a significant impact on all of the students of the district and the Goshen community. And we extend our heartfelt gratitude and wish you much happiness in all endeavors in the future. Congratulations.
I suppose now would have been a better sign to end my speech.
Absolutely. Moving on in my report, I am pleased to report to the board that I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Carter, with Fluentes from On My Way Learning Center, to look closely at our current kindergarten enrollment space available in Scottstown Avenue Elementary School. We had the opportunity to speak with Mrs. Driscoll this week regarding the opportunity to expand our universal pre-K by one more room for next year. We believe that we do have the space to do that and Mrs. Fluentes has begun the process of applying to OCFS to get the room approved moving forward. That will allow for us to bring 18 more students into the universal pre-K program for the 23-24 school year. We saw Mrs. Lamaran just to make sure that the universal pre-K monies and the grant were available. They are, and that will allow us to be able to fund that room for next year. Obviously, we will need to look year by year to make sure that we can sustain that, but we did have the space and Mrs. Driscoll felt confident in the room that we had selected together, that we would be able to move this forward together. And it's exciting to be able to do this and we'll begin notification as soon as we have the confidence from OCFS, they've approved the room and there's no major modifications that we'll have to make. I also wanted to give you an update on our Capitol work, both at Scottstown Avenue primarily and at CJ Hooker Middle School. As you know, a lot of the HVAC and the roofing work that had been going on at Scottstown had somewhat slowed down because we were waiting for the buildings to be vacated at the end of the school year. I want to give accolades to Mr. Freeze, I know he and the staff were in over this past weekend trying to prep the building to allow the plumbers and the rest of the HVAC crew to be able to come in today, get everything to where it needed to be so the asbestos abatement could be, could begin. It's going to be a busy summer in that building. They have a lot of work to make sure that they finish so that when the staff returns towards the end of August, beginning of September, that the building is ready. We met together with the staff at Scottstown Avenue and told them this year that we'd have to put off all the stuff that we do during the summer to make sure that the fields and everything are clear from dumpsters, hazardous debris, that the buildings are ready, so we actually instructed staff to take everything home with them that they otherwise might normally need when they would come back a couple of days early. We're actually, every single day, to be able to finish that. And the good news would be if we finished early, but the staff who are leaving this year, that they would really need to take everything necessary. They were in today, there was demo going on, the abatement, Mr. Freeze should begin within the next couple of days?
It's actually started today.
So, they actually started today, so we're on target, if not getting ready to push it out of target. But that building will be very, very busy throughout the vast majority of the summer. CJ Hooker, we've actually issued the purchase order. We had asked the board at the last meeting to pass a resolution that would allow us to do some emergent work on flooring. The flooring issue was that every, as we know, every little bit of any work that you do in CJ Hooker is going to require asbestos abatement. There were some floors where they had laid carpet over the existing tile, they had tried to tile over. Much of that had worn, it was no longer repairable. The letter of intent had already come back from the state, they had signed a project number. Mr. Freeze has been working with the contractor to make sure that work will be able to push forward as soon as possible. We'll be able to actually complete three different rooms. Speaking with Mrs. Lamaran, the goal moving forward with the Capitol Outlay Projects is to try to pick several rooms in that building each year, like a wood pending a successful budget passage, and be able to address a lot of the abatement issues that exist, at bare minimum, within the flooring. That's not to say that we don't have issues that we want to address in the walls as well and be able to hang things like new technology, but this is a good start and it's a responsible start without having to ask the community for additional borrowing to be able to do that work. Mr. Freeze also was able last year to hire a new maintenance worker that has a flooring background. So, instead of having to completely go out and hire a flooring contractor, he'll be able to work with a lot of the staff in-house to get a large majority of that work completed again for preparation for the new year. There's a couple of rooms in the cafeteria hallway going up where the carpeting really had become a serious issue and we needed truly to get this work done going into the new year. Do want to take a moment and speak to all of the end-of-the-year ceremonies. And I'd be remiss if I did not give accolades to all of our staff that were involved and I'm not going to try to name everyone, but led by Mrs. Howland, Mrs. Rorison, our two moving up ceremonies at Scottstown Avenue, we're both led inside. To see our youngest students be able to belt those songs out and get the moves going, it was a lot of fun to see. The families were very happy to be in the school and to be able to enjoy that together and they split the class in half and we were able to do it over two different ceremonies. G.I. asked for the first time, again with Mrs. Rorison, the leadership of Dr. Wentworth, moved the program to the evening. We'd had some experiences in the past where we tried to do it during the daytime and we got a little bit of a logjam with traffic. This also allowed families where work conflicts were an issue to be able to come together. Again, we were able to do two ceremonies and it was a great evening where people truly were glad to be a part of the night. We were able to sneak in the eighth grade moving up on the field. We were unsure of the weather, but boy, it held out for us and it was actually a very comfortable, beautiful night out there. Miss Carmen, Miss Weber had worked together to have a sound contractor come in this year, so the sound was much better, we had pushed back closer to the stands. We talked about some strategies for next year, but again, it was really a nice ceremony. Want to give accolades to all of the staff that were involved in facilitating those ceremonies. It doesn't happen just on the backs of one or two, it's everyone working together. Especially to take a moment to talk about the high school graduation ceremony. To move a ceremony that involves almost 1,500 to 2,000 people indoors was a major undertaking. And to be able to have it happen where everyone had a seat, everyone had a spot, we had plenty of chairs, and the opportunity for all the attendees to see the graduates process, either sitting in the auditorium or in the gymnasium. Again, it's never optimal to move that ceremony inside because no one has a space big enough to see that many people indoors. But I feel like our staff did a really wonderful job, led by Mr. Penleyon, making sure that it was as personalized as a pack possibly could be. And many thanks to all of our board members who were there to be able to help celebrate and offering, giving the diplomas to our students. So, it really was a nice end of the year and very grateful for all the work that our staff did to ensure that we ended on such a high note. The one last thing that I did want to address was end-of-the-year grading. So, as has been past practice and past years, the parent portal and the student portal gets closed down for the last two weeks. This allows for the guidance counselors, especially in the middle school and the high school, to go through all of the grades one last time, to make sure there's grades in all of the spots, to make sure all the assessments have dropped in. That portal will open again on the 30th, and this is in practice with what we have done in the past. And again, all of our counselors are in this week as well, checking all of those marks and making sure that everything is where it needs to be before the portal opens again. But that will open again this Friday, the 30th. With that, I'm back with Mrs. Salti.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Next on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the financial information for the month of May in your board packets. First though, I want to go through a couple of things. We have the internal auditors coming into the office tomorrow and on Wednesday, they're going to work on reviewing our accounts payable process, our claims auditing, and also internal controls, so we should have a draft of their report, I'd say, in the next couple of months to review. The external auditors were also in here, they were here last week for two days and they started their process and they will begin the rest of their field work on the first week of August. And then they should have a draft, they typically report to the board in October, the first board meeting in October, so we'll be shooting for that goal. So, for our financial reports, we received $2.5 million in general aid in the month of May. We also received some health and welfare billing, $33,000, and our interest earnings were $126,700. For budget status reports, our total expenses through the end of May were $65.7 million. This makes up 77% of our budget and it is on target with where we were last year at this time. And for earnings and our revenue, we earned $79 million and this is 95.9% of our revenue projections, so we can be on target as well. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology. Next on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology Report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mrs. Salty, good evening, everyone. So, as we had discussed in previous meetings, I had the pleasure of meeting with an ELA committee, and of course, the goal was to select the most up-to-date and comprehensive literacy program in alignment with next-generation standards that we could provide to our students in grades kindergarten through six. Behind me on the round table, you have a decent amount of samples, yet of course, that does not include everything that comes with the Scholastic Literacy Program, which was in fact, the program that was unanimous and chosen by all teachers on the committee and all administrators at the committee. If you just take a moment, just to take a peek, you do have interactive read-alouds, you have shared reading and guided reading materials, you have writer's workshop materials, in the bins, you have further guided reading materials at our level. What you're not seeing there at the moment is the guided reading assessment kits that we will have. Additionally, we have a Literacy Pro component that offers 2,800 different eBooks available at all levels for our students. Also, interactive activities that focus on phonemic awareness, phonological skills, and so on. It's quite comprehensive. Additionally, each building will get a rather large bookroom. In six copies with what Scholastic says is thousands of texts in print, all texts, authentic culturally relevant texts. So, we like to think that it is right now the most comprehensive program that we can provide our students. We did vet wit and wisdom from great minds, and we also had representatives from Heinemann who came in to go through the Ponsen-Punell comprehensive classroom set. Very good programs, however, we felt that the Scholastic program involved full integration with Google Classroom and other digital literacy components that were really important to our teacher staff, which would also really bolster that program on behalf of students, which is the most important piece. So, we look forward to you reviewing this program, we look forward to any feedback that you can provide. Most importantly, we do hope that you will approve the program for full implementation. I also want you to know that we built in 12 days of in-person coaching with Scholastic Literacy, and we also have nine days of further coaching, most likely through either webinar or Google Meet or WebEx/Zoom, whatever we can manage with Scholastic. I'd also like to mention that we have what I would consider to be a wonderful representative of Scholastic right here in Goshen. Mrs. Lucas, Suzanne Lucas was great to work with, provided us with not only this amount of samples here that you see, but also a lot of free materials that our teachers were able to look after, we made, look at after we made a decision. So, I feel quite comfortable with the whole package, including the coaching and representatives. I'd also like to take a moment, if I may, to just congratulate the class of 2023. Also want to mention those that are rising to new levels in their educational journey, meaning those moving up from second grade, from fifth grade, and from eighth grade. I know that they're at the very beginning of their journey, but it is the next step, and it's important to recognize. I also want to say thank you to the administrative team and all of the faculty and staff members that put in the work day in and day out to help our students grow and achieve and move on. So, thank you to everyone involved in that. And that is my report for this year.
Mr. Carter, am I wrong in just adding in that if any board wants to take any of the products with them, they can take them?
Absolutely, yes. I don't think that Suzanne would mind, you can feel free to take whatever you'd like to, and if I need them back, I'll let you know.
Because we'll be asking at the subject meeting if the board's approval, that's why I was here for a first read for you tonight. So, if you want to take any of the materials, please feel free to do so.
That was actually one of my questions, I don't have much time, board members would have after the meeting tonight, so thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, Shannon and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mrs., I need a motion to approve Minutes. Billie and Ashley, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the Minutes of the June 5th, 2023, regular board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to accept independent internal audit report prepared by Cooper Arias. I have Scott and Billie, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the independent internal audit report agreed upon procedures, initial risk assessment update for the year ending June 30th, 2023, as prepared by Cooper Arias LLP. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve 2.3, updated corrective action plan related to the internal audit report prepared by Cooper Arias. I have Shannon and Ashley, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the updated corrective action plan related to the Cooper Arias LLP's payroll conversion 2022 report for the audit year ending June 30th, 2022. All those in favor? Opposed? Need a motion to approve the issuance of short-term financing for the Goshen Public Library. Billie and Shannon, be it resolved that the Goshen Central School District approves the issuance of short-term financing in the amount of $450,000 to the Goshen Public Library Historical Society, according to the terms of the short-term financing agreement between both parties dated June 13th, 2022. All those in favor? I need a motion to approve and accept proposal from Land for Services associated with the emergency remediation of CJ Hooker floor abatement project. I have Shannon and Tom, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal from Land Associates Engineering Planning Architecture Surveying LLP Land dated June 13th, 2023, to provide design and management services relating to the floor abatement and replacement in three classrooms at CJ Hooker Middle School for a fixed fee of $13,200 for said services. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve budgetary transfers. I have Tom and Scott, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the budgetary transfers over $25,000 for the month of May 2023 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve school resource officer agreement between the Village of Goshen and Goshen Central School District. I have Scott and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the school resource officer agreement between the Village of Goshen and the Goshen Central School District dated June 26th, 2023, for the Village of Goshen to provide law enforcement protection at each of the district's four schools effective September 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2028. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to enter into, sign, and execute said agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for 12.8, approve entering into an agreement for services, Educational and Management Services Inc. I have Shannon and Ashley. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves entering into an agreement for services with Educational and Management Services Inc. to provide services in the filing of school-age stack forms into the New York State Education Department Stack Online Verification System for reimbursement of special education costs, computation of district of location billing, and training of district staff on the Stack Online System effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, at an annual rate of $21,630. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have the attendant?
Just ready, that's the agenda.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve agreement for special education services, nursing services. I have Shannon and Billie, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves entering into an agreement with Sunshine Home Care Services Corp. to provide nursing services to special education students effective July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, according to the following terms, $80 per hour for services provided by a licensed practical nurse, LPN, $90 per hour for services provided by a registered nurse, RN. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor? Opposed? There were no additional privileges, are there, Carter? Next on the agenda, board member issues, committee reports.
Quick update on the policy committee. First and foremost, thank you to all our parent volunteers who have joined our Code of Conduct Committee. The feedback that we received at our last meeting was very insightful, everybody sat down, came prepared. We did an overview of the district code of conduct and compared that to the outline for our forthcoming policy book. And really, the feedback was fantastic. Our next meeting is scheduled this week. We have our student representatives who will be joining us, we'll be doing some workshopping with them and some read-throughs of specific code of conduct sections. We've received feedback from some of our adult members as well on this, we're really looking forward to it, and I think it's going very smoothly so far. So, Dr. Coats, thank you for the leadership in getting that together, and thank you to the team of volunteers we have working on this together.
So, I could just add in, also, the policy committee reviewed the food service policy. We had a food service audit occurred where the policy was flagged for not being updated. The state actually approved our audit pending the board's review and approval of the updated policy. That policy is included in your packet for a first read, may asking you having any further recommendations or other changes to approve it at the reorganization meeting on the 10th.
I just want to ask one question about the Scholastic, just what the timeline looks like. I mean, you said there's lots of dates that are available, but what is that like? Does it imply we're going to be able to start at the, you know, rolling out?
So, our hope is that we can acquire all the materials throughout the summer months, one centralized location, and then get it out into the buildings. Our goal is to have implementation beginning in September, and in our elementary model, including grade six, truly, you know, we do take 30 to 45 days to truly get to know our learners as readers and so on. So, we're hoping that that could give us a little bit of time to get some of the professional coaching in to immediately start where we're ready to delve into, you know, all of the components of Scholastic literacy. So, I don't, I don't have that crystal ball, right?
Yes, that's the expectation.
That's the expectation, yeah. I'm hopeful.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Allison, you know, for, you know, your nine years of service and everything like that you've done for us. Definitely, you know, it's not an easy role all the time, and I just appreciate it, so thank you. And I just want to congratulate the seniors and wish all those that are off this summer to have a nice summer, and thank everybody for what they did for our kids this year.
Thank you, everyone.
Next on the agenda, I need a motion for the executive session. Billie and Shannon. Be it resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or persons. And the intent is not to return, with the intent not to return. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?